I'll call together the Monday, March 16th, 2015, City Council Regular Meeting and ask those who would like to join the council and myself in the pledge allegiance to please stand. And Eagle Scout Jake Hoops will lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is Agenda Bill 6977, Eagle Scout Recognition. And I have a certificate of appreciation that I would like to present at this time. Jake, this is a certificate of appreciation from the city of Issaquah, and it is hereby awarded to Jake Hoops in honor of his generous contributions and efforts in raising funds for a new scoreboard at Tibbetts Valley Park dated the 16th day of March 2015, signed by Mayor Fred Butler and attested to by our city clerk. And so, congratulations. This was an Eagle Scout project, I understand, that you took on because there was no scoreboard at Tibbetts Valley Park. And I'm going to present this to you, and I see in your hand a check for $4,500. So let me just say that. We certainly appreciate the hard work and generous contribution on half of your Eagle Scout project. Again, thank you very much.
Yes, no problem. Should I give my speech? All right. So, my name is Jake Hoops, and I'm in the eighth grade at PCMS. And in order to raise over $4,000, I had to approach different groups for money, especially my grandpa, who contributed to all of the fundraisers. But besides him, there were 167 other donors from the city of Issaquah. I did three main fundraisers. First, my baseball team helped me sell car wash tickets last spring. Second, in October, I made pizza dough and sold it to my church family, the Highlands Ward of Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And lastly, I finished off my fundraising with selling first-day kids to Little League families. I'm very happy I was able to raise enough money. I'm very thankful for all the people who helped, especially Mr. Ross Hoover at the city of Issaquah, who helped me along the way. Thank you.
Now, the next item on our agenda is audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, approach the lectern, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, the mayor will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. If the speaker does not comply, I will ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizen's comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. We take them seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask the clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, first up is Peter Smith, followed by Christina.
Mayor and the council, my name is Peter Smith. I'm a resident of the Issaquah community, not within the city boundaries, but within the city, the school district, and that's my reason for being here. I attend the, can you hear me? Yeah?
Yep, you're doing great, Peter.
I attend the community center for the use of the gym there. And because I'm ancient, I had the gold card privilege of 25 bucks a year, which is really a nice thing. And then on February the 18th, we were alerted that the dues for people who lived outside the city boundary but within the school boundary, the dues were going to go up to $175 a year. So, quite frankly, we were outraged. And for several reasons. One reason was the principle that they were treating seniors differently within the city and outside the city boundaries. That's kind of like discrimination. And the other reason was some of the seniors who attend the community center have health problems, and they're quite elderly and need to attend the gym to help them with their health problems, and really couldn't, can't afford the increase in dues because they live on a very fixed income. So, my friend Ken McNair and myself wrote some letters, and we had them signed by quite a large number of people here. And I've got copies of these for you, and I want to give them to you. Just a few days ago, we were alerted by Ross Hoover here that they'd reconsidered the situation, and they decided to lower the dues back down to $30 for everyone. So I thought that was a very nice thing to do, and I think our agitation seemed to have worked. So I'm here just to present, no more words, I think. I just present these to you so they're on record, in case you change your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Next is Christina, followed by Teresa.
Hello, Mayor Butler and City Council. Thank you for allowing us the time to make our comments. My name is Christina Gravette. My address is 425 Mountain Park Boulevard, Southwest, where I have lived for 29 years. I'm a business owner here. Every Way Fitness is the name of my business, and I'm under contract as a personal trainer and group fitness instructor at the Issaquah Community Center. I'm here in support of finding full funding to build the $500,000 skate park that we chose last summer. I'm glad to see that it's on the agenda, thank you for that. My son is professional skateboarder David Gravette. He was born and raised here, which is remarkable because most pro skaters come from California, only a handful hail from the Pacific Northwest, thanks to our weather, our fewer skate parks, and rougher concrete, or so I hear. I want to reassure anyone who has a preconceived notion of the kind of person a skateboarder is. Events at our old park made some people think skateboarding goes together with drugs and antisocial behavior, but it is not so. The skaters I've met are like a big international family, very supportive of each other, and mainly interested in honing their skills and trying new tricks and new terrain. I've had many teams stay at my house over the years, and they are always polite and appreciative. While in town, they patronize our grocery stores, restaurants, and bars, and one team thanked me for my hospitality with flowers from Countryside Floral and cupcakes from My son was always an active kid. He excelled at baseball, soccer, tennis, diving, but when he discovered skateboarding, he found his passion, and he progressed fast because he could move at his own pace. He didn't need a team, or a practice time, or a coach, or a sign-up fee. That's the beauty of skateboarding, it's available to anyone with a board. I'd like to see Issaquah get a skate park that can accommodate a wide range of skills, where skaters can grow from beginner to expert. I'd like Issaquah to have a destination skate park because kids get inspired when pros come to skate their park. The design approved last year met these criteria and also provided a viewing area for parents or other spectators. If we're going to build a new skate park, let's build the best one we can possibly manage. It's going to last 20 years or more, and if we do it right, it won't become obsolete. As a personal trainer, I love to see people exercising. Have you ever watched any skateboarding? The energy and skill required are phenomenal. Let's give our kids an awesome park that they can walk, ride, or bus to, pay no money to use, and get great exercise. Thank you. And I'm actually here also as Teresa. She wrote, she was hoping to be here, but she's in California. Can I read a statement from her? Is that all right?
Oh, right ahead.
So Teresa Stopford lives at 485 Mount Defiance Circle, and she has her own business here as a licensed massage therapist. And she says, "Mayor Butler and members of the Issaquah City Council, thank you so much for your time tonight, and thank you for helping to realize the dream of a large group of skateboarding youth in our community, the dream of having a safe and usable local skate park. You all generously designated $350,000 to fund the brand-new skate park. Together with local government, a citizens advisory committee, and skate park designers, a park was designed that will provide enjoyment, safety, and usability. Everyone, including local skateboarders, was given a voice in items such as location, as well as design features providing for safety and usability. It was a true group effort. When the design was finalized, the cost of the project was $150,000 over budget. In trying to find solutions for the difference, a few options have been mentioned. One idea is to shrink the park, another is to build the park in phases. However great ideas, these are not ideal for the safety and usability factors that are very important to the group. The Issaquah skateboard community, along with 1,293 petition signers, suggests local government help find the additional funds needed to build the group-designed skate park. It will provide a safe environment for various levels of skateboarding, room for the skate park to accommodate several riders, a possible viewing area for spectators, and the quality to host contests and demonstrations. We know this is not a small amount we're asking for, at 30% of the city's original commitment. However, it would be worth it. We believe that Issaquah cares about its community and their safe access to sports and recreation. We believe Issaquah cares about providing adequate facilities to accommodate population growth, and most importantly, we know Issaquah cares about our children. The funds needed to build this park represent less than 1/2% of proposed future recreation spending in Issaquah. That 1/2% could make a huge difference to local youth skateboarders and ensure we build a park they can be proud of. We hope you will agree. Thank you again for your time. The Stopford family, Wyatt, Teresa, Rogue, and Thor. Thank you."
Thank you. Please, I'm going to ask that you not applaud, and if you can raise your hand if you agree with what you heard is probably more appropriate. Sometimes we get very contentious issues here, and we don't want to set up a situation where we're pitting some of our citizens against other citizens. So I hope you understand the reason why we typically don't allow applause during our meetings. Has anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, Austin Fisher, followed by Jerry Blackburn.
Hello, I just want to start off by saying thank you, Mayor Butler and the City Council, for hearing us out tonight, and, yeah, we definitely appreciate that. And my name is Austin Fisher. I live at 23420 Southeast Black Nugget Road here in Issaquah, Washington, where I've resided for the last four and a half years, and then lived here about seven years total So I'm 32 years old, have been skateboarding for almost 18 years. So I was around since the early days of the existing park here. I still do it as much as I possibly can, you know, balancing a full-time job and my home life with my wife and my now nine-month-old daughter, which keeps my hands full. But anyway, I still am skateboarding at a competitive level, and I have a lot of friends in the area that do. And we were all part of the process last summer with the location and the design. And we really would like to see, I mean, we are very, very grateful for the $350,000 that's been allotted for the new skate park, and understand now that it's about $150,000 over budget. But we definitely want to see the park get built, the one that we designed. Christina briefly touched on it about how the, by simply shrinking the design that's already created, just doesn't really work. So there's other elements that would go into it with that, which, you know, our main concern is would delay it further, as well as be more costly and take out of the budget that we already have aside for that. So, yeah, I mean, that's basically all I really had to say. I don't want to ramble on too much, but I definitely appreciate the time and hearing us out, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council, good to see you guys. Jerry Blackburn, I live at 1401 Year Boulevard South, a half a block down. And I wanted to come tonight just to represent the Drug Free Community Coalition and give our thanks to all the time and efforts regarding the skate park. I know it's been a lot, the amount of enthusiasm and excitement and work and effort that's been put in, really, kind of from a grassroots standpoint, gives an indication of how much folks care about the kids. And I mean, I couldn't mirror any further what was already said about the advantages of that, the larger footprint, and what it would provide to our community in terms of safe and fun, and exercise, and encouragement, and all of those things are just such a representation of what we want to have in Issaquah, and the ability for folks to come from other areas to explore Issaquah. All of that thing is advantageous for our economy and our community. So we just wanted to give you our thanks. That's really the only reason for coming this evening, because we really do appreciate all the work, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Lauren Johnson.
Can we have some papers to pass out? Yeah. Hi, my name is Vincy Falk. My partner here is Lauren Johnson, and we're both juniors at Liberty High School in the Issaquah School District. Tonight, we're here to introduce to you our second annual STAR Talks. And so...
And we're inviting you all. So, the STAR Talks are funded by the Issaquah Schools Foundation, the Boeing Charitable Trust, and the King Conservation District. So if any of you guys have ever seen a STAR Talk, I mean, a TED Talk, STAR Talks are modeled after those. And so they're about 10 minutes long, and they're by professionals, expert professionals, and expert students. And they're focusing around stormwater this year. So we have nine different expert speakers, and then we have three students that are speaking on issues of stormwater and solutions.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to mention, we're also both sustainability ambassadors. Our mission is to empower youth to catalyze community sustainability. And so if you just want to follow along, where it says "About STAR," it just talks a little bit about what the STAR Community Rating System is. STAR stands for Sustainable Tools for Assessing and Rating, and there are seven goals and 44 objectives to achieve. And the great thing about STAR is that it doesn't matter your politics, your geography, or your population, everyone can reach these goals if they set their mind to it. And so what we want to do with STAR, if you want to flip the paper over, is we want to use it in the classroom. We want the STAR framework to become the table of contents for our dynamic textbook. We want to align the policies of city government with the learning goals of the local schools to enhance curriculum relevance with real-world problem-solving linked to improving community conditions. And so we'll also be featuring the exceptional work of the city of Issaquah's Office of Sustainability and their 26 indicators that benchmark progress on an annual basis in response to the question, "How sustainable are we?" And so for the, under the kickoff and framing presentations, the first one, I'll be speaking, I'll be speaking on four minutes on what is STAR. And the great opportunity that STAR gives me is that in our club, our green team, what we call Eco Squad at Liberty, we watch TED Talks and we model these Potty Talks after them. And so it's just really cool to be able to see, just, it's to develop my own public speaking skills and to be in front of these cameras, and to just speak to my fellow classmates on something that I'm really passionate about, and I'm sure Lauren is too, so.
I'll be speaking on the next four minutes, which is modeled after what's the problem with stormwater. So this four minutes is really important because all of the TED Talks or STAR Talks following are talking about solutions that are addressing the problem with stormwater. So we'll just be, I'll be discussing, disgusting, discussing what the issues are with stormwater and why it's important that we address it. And then if you flip to the next page, you can take a look at an example of what one of the periods will look like. So period one, from 7:30 to 8:15, we'll have three 10-minute expert sessions. The first is the end of the pipe and pubic sound with underwater videographer Laura James. The second 10-minute talk will be low-impact development strategies with Curtis Heineman, the senior scientist, and LID specialist with Herrera Environmental Engineering. And the last 10-minute section will be building soil for stormwater management with David McDonald and Seattle Public Utilities. And if you take a look at the bottom there, the little grid, that's an example of, or this is how the first period will lay out, and the following ones will as well.
And so in period two, our first 10-minute presentation will be given on toxins in stormwater pollution by Jennifer McIntyre, research scientist with the Wazoo Stormwater Center. Our second one is on stormwater law by Jackie Schwartz, Washington Department of Ecology. And the last one is on school campus stormwater solutions by Cass Kinsade, landscape architect, principal of Cascade Design Collaborative, who also designed the Issaquah High School rain gardens there. And the last, but certainly not least session of the day, is another 45-minute program, beginning with a 10-minute talk on the CSO basins and the future of streets with Christine Kramer, the community relations planner with the King County Wastewater Treatment Division. The next will be green infrastructure at the neighborhood scale with Greg Geraldo PE from SVR Design Company. And the last will be rain harvest engineering with Trish Sherman from Dykman Inc. So we hope to see you guys all there. This is our second annual STAR Talks, like we mentioned before, and we're really excited. It's all going to be filmed by professional videographers, and we hope to have these videos circulating for years to come, so, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both. That's the last of the signups. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Third and final call, is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Seeing none then, audience comments are closed, and we will now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report tonight.
And Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you. Don't have the date, but I'll look it up for the clerk shortly. Land and Shore did meet last week, and we looked at the Issaquah Middle School Master Site Plan and Site Development Permit. It was remanded by Land and Shore back to the Development Commission for consideration of a few limited items. This will be a reopening of the public hearing, but just on those items. It'll be coming to the full council on April 6th. And just a reminder that it is a significant package of information and video from the Development Commission. The Central Issaquah Plan Annual Progress Report was also discussed. It was presented by staff with edits that had been suggested by the Land and Shore Committee members last fall and October. The committee this year has recommended a few additional edits, and we do not have a date or format for when it is going to be coming back to council yet. We also had a brief discussion of annexation processes about how, under the comprehensive plan, we include PPA's, potential annex, or sorry, PAA's, potential annexation areas, and how they are also removed from the comprehensive plan. Our next meeting is April 2nd, which is a Thursday at 5:30 in this chambers, and we have not set the agenda yet. I have a report from the Growth Management Policy Board, I'm an alternate for the Sound Cities Association on that. They had some, one item for vote, which was one that had been before the SCA PIC as well. It was on the military facilities and how they would be incorporated into regional planning in the future. There was a draft position statement, which was supported by the SCA PIC, and it was voted in favor to put it forward with that position to the PSRC executive. They also talked about their budget for 2016, 2017. They did an updated regional economic forecast, which was very informative. There is video online for that, if you're interested in it. And they talked more about the Industrial Land Analysis Program. Their next meeting is April 2nd, from 10 to 12 at the PSRC Boardroom in downtown Seattle. And they will be discussing the Issaquah Regional Growth Center designation at that meeting. There will be no May meeting for the policy board. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several reports, the first of which, I realized at the March 2nd council meeting, I forgot to mention the, I give a report from the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee for King County, and that was held on Thursday, February 26th, in the Bertha Knight Landis Room. And we had a number of topics, including a legislative update that discussed a number of law, safety, and justice issues that are being addressed in Olympia, including efforts on reconciliation between medical and recreational marijuana laws. We then had a presentation from King County Sheriff John Urquhart, also on legislation and initiatives that are out there. He's particularly interested in body cameras, and I would say that his position was that they're in favor of body cameras, but you have to have it in both directions. You have to have it in, for defense of people accused of crimes, and also for the defense of, when there's, when there's questions about police conduct, you have to be able to use it in both directions. And it was interesting, because he pointed out that the National ACLU was in support of that position, but unfortunately, King County ACLU was not. King County ACLU felt it was suitable for the defense of, you know, people who are defendants in cases, but didn't want to allow it for the defense of police officers accused of crimes. And of course, you can imagine the sheriff was not excited about that direction. Finally, we ended up with a report, basically on the consent decree that currently exists between the Department of Justice and the Seattle Police Department, and the extents that the SPD, which are going through, which are substantial and formidable, in meeting that consent decree, and the successes that they have had in putting in place mechanisms to review use of force to get in line with the agreement with the Department of Justice. So it was a very positive presentation. Next, the Council Services and Safety Committee met on Tuesday, March 10th, at 5:30 across the street in the Eagle Room. We had two issues before us, both of which are currently on this evening's consent agenda, Agenda Bill 6974, a memorandum of understanding for a public safety emergency radio network. This is ahead of a vote that's going to go before King County residents on potential funding for a replacement radio network. It's a substantial amount of money. And then, secondly, Agenda Bill 6948, it's titled Neighborhood Parks, it primarily concerns, all of a sudden I'm blanking on the, why am I, Hillside Park, I don't know why I'm blanking on it, but anyhow, lots of, lots of reports. Then finally, SCA PIC met on the next night, March 11th, in Renton City Hall. We had a number of issues in front of us. The only one that was, I would say was actionable, revolved around an initial, an initial presentation on the Committee to End Homelessness Draft Strategic Plan. Basically, the PIC came back and said that the plan had an insufficient level of detail and granularity, and they urged the committee to come up with a more detailed plan that constituent municipalities could take a look at. And it was, I believe unanimously, that position was unanimously supported out of PIC. So there was a lot of concerns about, while of course, all the municipalities involved want to reduce homelessness, that the particulars of the plan involved really needed some more work. This concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherer.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee will meet this Thursday, March 19th, at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. I will not be present for that meeting, as I'll be traveling on business, but Council President Winterstein will be chairing the agenda that evening. Scheduled on the agenda is an informational item on the Master Mobility Plan, which is a council goal that came out of last year's council retreat. We also have an informational item scheduled on the Commute Trip Reduction Program Update. There is Agenda Bill 6973, which is the 2015 Cooperative Watershed Management Grant Application for Salmon Run Nature Park. Actions anticipated on that item. We have Agenda Bill 6923, which upon approval of tonight's consent agenda will be referred to the committee, which is an informational item on the potential vacation... to the committee, which is an informational item on the potential vacation of a portion of Southeast 68th Place. And just for reference sake, that's somewhat near the I-90 westbound off-ramp near exit 17. And that item will eventually be scheduled for a public hearing. And then finally, upon approval of tonight's consent agenda is Agenda Bill 6983, dealing with sidewalk extension on Newport Way near 12th and Maple. An action is anticipated by the committee on that item. In addition, by way of a regional report, the East Side Transportation Partnership met last Friday, and we had first, a presentation from the city of Kenmore on projects that they are currently doing within their jurisdiction concerning transportation issues. It's part of our rotating monthly showcase on various cities and the major projects that are going on. And the previous month, we had Sheldon Lynn, our Public Works Engineering Director, give a great presentation on our outstanding projects in Issaquah, which was greatly appreciated. We also had a visit from Representative Jay Rodney, who's our State House Representative in the 5th Legislative District. And Representative Rodney shared with us his perspective on the ongoings in Olympia concerning transportation. He does serve on the House Transportation Committee and was able to give us a, some unique insights into what's going on currently, as the House is the next stop for a transportation package. We are hoping that next month, Representative Jessen Farrell will be able to join us. She's also on the House Transportation Committee, so we'll get to continue talking to our legislators. We had a presentation from King County Metro and Sound Transit on U-Link integration of the two agencies working together when the U-Link service comes online, and some of the impacts that that will have on east side bus routes, principally in Redmond and Kirkland, and also some talk about where those service hours will be allocated, or not allocated perhaps. And then, we had some other reports and internal business to deal with. First of all was a report from the Planning Committee concerning some potential action, both with regards to hiring a consultant and what used to be known as the Technical Advisory Committee, but I'll be following up with the administration, perhaps at an upcoming leadership meeting, to get the administration's perspective on staffing and other issues relating to those items. And then I may bring it back before the full council, prior to the next ETP meeting, once I have some more information. There was also information provided about the ETP inter-local agreement, which will extend automatically at the end of this year, unless that agreement is canceled or modified, and there would be a two-year extension. So we agreed to defer that particular item to the next ETP meeting until each of us could go back to our jurisdictions and find out if anyone had concerns about that ILA. So again, I'll probably be bringing that back to your attention at good of the order at our next council meeting at the beginning of April. Tomorrow, I will be conducting ETP leadership meeting with the vice chairs, and if there's any items that you would like to see on the ETP agenda or have questions about, feel free to let me know after the meeting, because that will be tomorrow morning, bright and early. And with that, my reports are concluded.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Y-Rate Management Committee meeting this month. We were looking at just simply the draft budget and also the work plan for 2016. The budget was proposed, recommended to be moved forward to the full council, which means, the full board, excuse me, which means Thursday, the 19th. We simply looked at basics, increase salaries, benefits, operations, maintenance. There will be a increase for the 2016 at 2.18 percent, or 2017, a 2.2 percent increase. There's 28 partners under the Y-Rate, a small budget of $613,000, so Issaquah shares only $12,980-some dollars, so this is a pretty small budget for us. So that was proposed to be approved, and that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor. East Side Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met last Thursday, and I have a few highlights from that meeting. The first order of business was there was some recognition of some former, some former board members who served, one of which was our own Eileen Barber, recognized for her service on that board for five or six years, six years. And then, the board adopted its 2015 goals for the agency, that we had two fairly lengthy meetings about those goals, and we finally got to the point where we could adopt them. I would read them all off, but I think without context, it's just, they're just titles or topics. And so, if you're interested, I'll let you know what they are, but they should be posted on the East Side Fire and Rescue website soon enough. Board also directed that an Agenda Bill be prepared for next month's board meeting to include a draft, either a request for qualifications or a request for proposals, not sure which one it will be, for retaining a consultant to conduct an external search for a new fire chief. And the board's plan is to have a new chief in place by February 1st, 2016, and that Agenda Bill also is to include a requested appropriation for the cost of that search. And in response to the recent financial audit, the board formed an ad hoc committee. So that committee, composed of board members, could attend the audit visits this year. I think there are expected to be a couple more visits this year. The next meeting is April 9th. It's always the second Thursday of the month, 4 o'clock, at headquarters on Newport Way. That's my report.
Thank you. Council President Winterstein.
No report.
For the mayor's report this evening, there will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing current litigation per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, per N1, per NI. The item is expected to take approximately 20 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. Seattle had its second international film festival on February the 28th and March the 1st. More than 700 seats were filled there. It was a tremendous success. It featured six films representing France, Italy, the United Kingdom, India, Japan, and the U.S. Cinebar hosted that and did a tremendous job in making the theaters available at no charge. The Standard and Poor's Rating Services affirmed its double-A long-term rating on Issaquah's Series 2011 Water Revenue Refunding Bonds. The outlook is stable, stable service areas that, that participate in the larger Seattle regional economy, history of strong debt service coverage, when including connection fees, and strong liquidity position. The King County Metro has kicked off the first of a number of meetings, looking at the service guidelines. I'm represented on the task force doing that work. Over the next four months, we will look at the existing guidelines and recommend any changes. Our first two meetings are more of a primer on, on transit. We'll roll up our sleeves after that and get to work. It will also inform the development of Metro's Long Range Plan, which is scheduled to be completed by mid-2016. The city is represented on an advisory group of the work underway on that project. Finally, through the Transportation Policy Board of PSRC, I had an opportunity to receive the latest update about our region's traffic congestion. Regionally, employment has grown faster than population, especially in King and Snohomish Counties. Issaquah is one of the seven fastest-growing employment centers in the region, along with downtown Seattle, Bellevue, and Redmond. It's important to note that Issaquah also has the smallest population of any of the areas on the PSRC's list. It also showed that delay on Interstate 90 from Seattle to Issaquah increased by 100 percent between 2010 and 2014. To put that into perspective, it amounts to 600 more hours of delay per year for drivers in that section of the I-90 corridor. This is, highlights, I believe, the importance of two transportation projects that are included in the Senate's transportation package, the auxiliary lanes east and west on I-90, and the interchange justification report that are in the Senate's version. With that, that concludes the mayor's report. We will now move to the consent calendar, and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of account payables and payroll dated March 16th. Item B seeks approval of minutes for city council regular meeting dated March 2nd. Item C is Agenda Bill 6923, vacation of a portion of Southeast 68th Place. Seeks approval of a resolution seeking, setting public hearing and referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. If approved, this resolution will be assigned 2015-06. Item D is Agenda Bill 6948, Neighborhood Parks, which directs administration. Item E is Agenda Bill 6955, the 2015 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments, seeks approval to various council committees. Item F is Agenda Bill 6974, Memorandum of Understanding for Public Safety Emergency Radio Network, which seeks authorization. Item G is Agenda Bill 6975, the Skate Park Project, which seeks a referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item H is Agenda Bill 6979, the NEP Watershed Grant Program Application, which seeks authorization to submit. And Item I is Agenda Bill 6983, Complete Street Sidewalk Extension on Newport Way, 12th Avenue Northwest to Maple Street, which seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove an item from the consent calendar and move it to regular business?
Yes. I am asking that we pull Item D, Agenda Bill 6948, Neighborhood Parks, to regular business for discussion.
Okay, so Agenda Bill 6948, Neighborhood Parks, will become Item Number 8A under regular business. Any other Agenda Bills that council members desire to move? Seeing none then, have the accounts payable and payroll been reviewed?
Yes, they have.
And with that, what is your pleasure on the consent calendar? Council President Winterstein.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Item 8A, Agenda Bill 6948, Neighborhood Parks. That's coming back from the Services and Safety Committee. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to read from the summary statement. "In 2014, the Issaquah City Council set a goal to develop neighborhood parks into usable recreational facilities, beginning with Hillside Park. Located on Squawk Mountain, Hillside Park is a 34-acre parcel adjacent to Hillside and Upper Hillside Cemeteries. Hillside Park is a walk-in park with a two-acre open area for active recreational play. Other park elements include a picnic table, pet waste station, garbage can, and a backstop. The remaining 32 acres are native forested hillside with steep terrain. Social trails connect the open area and hillside with the surrounding neighborhoods." To open a dialogue about Hillside Park, Parks and Recreation staff coordinated two public input meetings, sent direct mailings to 317 residents near the park, and worked with the city's communications team to collect input online and through social media. And there is, the bill has an attached list of public comments, which the Services and Safety Committee members reviewed prior to, are looking at this bill. Public input at both of the public input meetings held on November 6th and 19th, 2014, more than 20 members of the public attended and shared input. In addition, input was gathered through the city's website and social media platforms. The following is the list of the most dominant ideas that came through public input. Desire for the park to remain as-is with limited changes. Desire to maintain the open playfield and perhaps add limited play structures. Desire to maintain the natural environment and not overdevelop. Desire for invasive plant removal and modest pruning to increase visibility. And finally, desire for increased trail connectivity. Oh, and recognizing, recognition that Hillside Park is a valuable resource for neighbors to connect and build community. In the public input meeting process, it was recognized that Hillside Park was referred to by a variety of names, and it lists the various names. Action, Parks and Recreation Department has increased maintenance of its park through the 2015 Parks Maintenance Plan. Steps include invasive plant removal, increased drainage of the playfield, and pruning to increase visibility. In 2015, the Park Maintenance Division has already taken steps to address issues raised during the public outreach process. And there is, the bill has an attached display of a very fine job of clearing out and making the park cleaner and easier to use. The Parks and Recreation Department will submit for funding within the Capital Facilities Project, CFP, request to address park improvements. In 2015, a park board subcommittee will be formed to address the naming and possible renaming of Hillside Park. Throughout the year and into the future, the Parks and Recreation Department will seek opportunities to work with volunteers, volunteer organizations, and nonprofit organizations to create opportunities for volunteers to participate in trail and park maintenance projects as resources and time allow. This council goal has been completed. Then, administration recommendation recommends council close the Hillside Park portion of the 2014 council goal, and then in quotes, generate a plan in 2014 for developing neighborhood parks into a usable recreational facilities, into a usable recreational facilities, beginning with Hillside Park. Update, Services and Safety met on March 10th to review the bill. Following discussion, committee recommended amending the action statement to read as follows. The Parks and Recreation Department will submit for funding within the CFP, request to additional park improvements, including low impact, and then we added low-maintenance play elements in keeping with the rustic nature of the park. Committee recommended this item, as amended, be placed on the consent agenda at the March 16th, 2015 council meeting. So, that is, that is the bill that we had before us.
So, if I may, so there's not a motion on the table right now, but there is one suggested in the packet. I wouldn't mind having a discussion about that motion, if someone wants to make it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I should probably have finished the bill then, shouldn't I? Therefore, move to direct administration to close the Hillside Park portion of the 2014 council goal, generate a plan in 2014 for developing neighborhood parks into a usable recreational facilities, beginning with Hillside Park, as amended.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Council President Winterstein.
Okay, thank you for that reading into the record, Councilmember Marts. The reason I asked for this is, you may not, you all know it's goal season, and I'm, I'm somewhat of a stickler for the procedure that we just established last year and are continuing to go forward. The actual city goal for this, the plan for neighborhood parks, which was adopted in 2013, and it was approved by us as part of an Agenda Bill last July, the actual action items and timeline of that, the step that's been accomplished is really item number one, and there are actually two items. This, and I don't wonder if the committee looked at these, because the second item on there is update the Parks Comprehensive Plan. So previously, this council, same people sitting here right now, took action and adopted this plan that, that had two action steps. And I really would like to see us complete both action steps before we declare this complete. I've been tracking this one, and I knew, I attended some of these meetings. Oh, actually, I attended one of the public meetings, and so I have more than just a passing interest. I'm also a user of that park and very much supported the original goal as, as we adopted it two years ago. And so, it's one thing to develop a specific plan for Hillside Park, like we've done, but what, the scope was always, at least, the scope, however, the goal is to actually reflect a plan for neighborhood parks in our 2015 Comprehensive Plan, which is still out. a plan for neighborhood parks in our 2015 Comprehensive Plan, which is still out in front of us. But I see a conflict between the claim of this bill that we've, and the motion, which is to close the goal, when in fact, we haven't accomplished the second step, upgrade the comprehensive plan. So, you know, I'm very much interested in what the committee council members' comments about that are, but in, from my standing right now, I do not support this motion because I don't think the goal is complete, haven't seen the comprehensive plan.
I will say, it was discussed in committee that it is unusual to have closure of a council goal by agenda bill, and that caught people's attention. And so, we had a debate as to how extensively this proposal actually met the entirety of the goal. However, as several of us had been particularly interested in Hillside, and that had spurred some of our initial interest in this goal, we felt, okay, well, it does specifically address Hillside in particular, so we were willing to move forward. But I would say some of your concerns were brought up in committee. And though we moved forward three to oh, it is extremely unusual to explicitly call out closing of council goals in an agenda bill. I'm not sure it's ever occurred before that way, or been proposed to occur that way.
And so, a comment. Our current Comprehensive Plan is being updated this year with, and that needs to be completed prior to June the 30th. And there is an agenda bill that refers various elements of the Comprehensive Plan to various council committees as a part of this packet this evening. So, it would be appropriate, in my mind, if you would like to amend a motion and add the second part of the original goal to the motion. That would appear to be appropriate from where I stand. Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. I raised the point that, well, brought up about this being somewhat bizarre. I've never seen in seven-plus years an agenda bill dealing with a council goal being closed, and this seemed much more appropriate for a committee of the whole discussion or one of our quarterly goal updates. And I just didn't understand what we were doing in this bill, and I think I commented at the time that this definitely should go to consent, because I saw no need to spend a ton of time on discussing the closure of a goal. And yet, here we are. So, what I was satisfied with from my perspective is that my colleagues on the committee believed that the intent of this goal, which came from them, I have no independent recollection, but I trust them, you know, that this satisfied the intent of that goal that was originally proposed. But I, like you, Paul, shared the concern, and I raised the question to Brian from the Parks Department about the plan. I said, well, the goal says generate a plan. And I said, where's the plan? We've done something with Hillside Park, or we're going to be doing more with Hillside Park, but where's the generate a plan part of the goal? Because that's what it said. And the response came back that when the comp plan is updated, that those issues regarding recreational facilities will be part of the update for parks, and that any issues that may arise in the course of consideration of recreational facilities at various parks would be addressed through that update. And so, again, the consensus seemed to be that, for all intents and purposes, the spirit of the goal was therefore satisfied, and as the mayor pointed out, we would be taking up the, those issues in the comp plan amendment. So, that's why I went along with supporting the bill. It seems for tonight's purposes, I'm confused about the idea of amending the bill or doing something to the language here. I'm satisfied with, if everyone feels this was the spirit of the goal, saying, yes, we've closed the goal, and if everyone feels this wasn't the spirit of the goal, and we want to wait until the comp plan amendments are done, then I would just as soon not support it, wait till that's done, and then, I don't know, we've got this agenda bill to bring back or something. Again, I don't even know why this is an agenda bill. Thanks.
Councilmember Marts.
I think what's important here, I don't disagree with what either Council President Winterstein or Councilmember Share said. I don't necessarily disagree with that. What's important here is that a lot of work was done in engagement in the community on the park, and that the Parks Department came forward with a recommendation, and we modified that and clarified it a little bit with where we saw as important out of the public process. So, I want to make sure that whatever we do, however we direct things, I like the portion of this bill that enshrines that process and what came out of that process. I just, it sounds like there's a lot of confusion about the goal side of it. I don't really know, you can, obviously, you can, someone could propose removing the sentence under action, the council goal has been completed, but I don't know how you, at this moment, reword the actual recommendation, because the actual, if you take out the closure portion, I'm not sure what the action is. So, I sort of think that maybe this should go back to Ann and Brian, and they figure out how to just word the part that we're clear on, which is the hard work that they did in community engagement, and, you know, recraft this so that we take out the part that has to do with the closure.
Right, just a second. To me, the important part of this piece, and I understand that this was a council goal, that we're talking about generating a plan for developing neighborhood parks, but this particular piece got honed down to Hillside Park. And as Tola said, that there was a lot of work and a lot of citizens' input in regards to this. So, I guess, a question, I don't know if it can be answered right now, if this gets, either way, if it goes back according to Council President or Tola, it's going to slow down the process of getting anything done on this park, which is always difficult. So, if we do send it back to Ann, can they answer the question? I would like to move this part forward. I'd like to see something happen on this part, however the best procedure we can do to make sure this part begins to have something happen to it. And then, we can take a look at generating a plan for developing neighborhood parks as a separate item. So, I'm not sure where to send this back, other than it would be wonderful to see this part begin to move forward soon.
I agree with Eileen. I guess, for me, I was very happy with the process that they used to talk to the neighborhood and find out what they wanted to do with the park. But I thought what this bill would be, would be a summary of the findings of that, and then authorization on our part to fund something, some sort of commitment. That's what I expected the bill to be. So, I found the bill a little confusing. I thought there were two things that were coming out of the goal. One was a specific project plan for Hillside. The other was what I would just call a plan, which could have just been an inventory of all the neighborhood parks the last time they were touched, and the next ones we're going to touch. That's what I thought the goal was saying. You're going to do this, we're going to start this process here with this park, and out of that comes a process and an inventory with a plan of where you're going next. So, I'm not sure if we approve this bill tonight, that this work starts on the park or not, because there is no funding authorization. I agree with you, let's get it done. They did a great job on process, but this is, this bill doesn't have a funding recommendation. It hasn't been priced out yet. So, I'm not sure if we don't act on this one tonight, if we slow anything down. Maybe we should just make a request for the bill to come back with funding.
Funding.
I believe the motion is the Parks and Rec Department will submit for funding within the Capital Facilities Project Request to address park improvements, including low impact, low maintenance, play elements in keeping with the rustic nature of the park. That sounds fairly specific to me.
Just follow it then. Then why not just do that at a cow, tell us they're doing it, and just do it? Why, I still don't see the point of this bill, I guess.
Councilmember Goodman?
So, one of the questions has been raised about how something will be slowed down by not adopting something in this bill. And I'm not sure if it's a goal, and part of goals is to set direction, work plan direction. How does, how, if we don't adopt this, because I'm not sure what this does, how does that affect the work on Hillside Park or any other work that's in the goal? How does it, how does council action slow that down, or failure to act on this, slow that down? I guess that's an adminis-
This provides direction for us to do something.
What? I'm not sure what it-
Submit for funding within the Capital Facilities Project to address the funding, park improvements, including low impact, low maintenance, play elements in keeping with the rustic nature of the park. That's the motion that's on the table.
I thought the motion was to the direct administration to close the Hillside Park portion of 2014 council goal.
Correct.
Not to submit funding. So, it, so-
What was your-
The problem is that even as amended, the recommend, the move to is different than the action statement above. So, the action statement above is not written as a motion.
Would you repeat the motion?
The motion, the motion that was on the consent agenda was move to direct administration to close the Hillside Park portion of the 2014 council goal, quote, generate a park in 2014 for developing neighborhood parks into a usable recreational facilities, including, beginning with Hillside Park, end quotes, as amended.
So, is everybody who wanted to make initial comments had an opportunity to offer their comments? Okay, so I'll comment again. So, yeah, the way this, the motion that's written here, the action in here is to close a goal. That's actually what this motion is. And so, I'm actually being a little bit of a stickler for procedure and protocol here. I agree with all the earlier points made about the spirit and the intent as it relates to Hillside, and I think there's a way forward and still meet our procedure for actually calling a goal complete when we actually complete all the tasks assigned to the goal. So, I can distribute, if people haven't seen it or have access to it, the copy of the goal, which includes the final step of updating the Comprehensive Plan. And I'm very much in favor of not closing a goal until I see a Comprehensive Plan update. This is what this council adopted last July. So, you know, if this particular, if we vote on this particular motion, if it's not removed, if we vote and it fails, I'd be prepared to offer a counter motion, which basically would read the actual direction, the actual action that's up there in the update section, and offer that as a counter proposal, without a statement at all regarding the closing of the goal. So, I mean, I'm ready, and I've sensed from my councilmates that that is exactly the type of action that you would support, so I'm-
Someone read the motion back to me.
It's the one that's right in the bill.
On the second page.
Is that the one you read, Tola?
Yeah.
Yes, well, I, yes, I read the one that was in, that was in tonight's consent agenda.
Direct the administration to close the Hillside Park portion of the 2014 council goal, generate a plan in 2014 for developing neighborhood parks into a usable recreation facility, beginning with Hillside Park, as amended. And the as amended portion is-
Yes.
The statement in the update? Is that, someone help me out there. Because I, I'm just trying to determine what is the motion that's on the table.
The motion is, as you read, as you read it, the way I understand this, just me, is that the portion of the council goal that stated, generate a plan, et cetera, is closed, not the portion of the goal that talked about amending the comp plan. So, they're saying just part of the goal has been completed. So, that's how I read it. You can be clear if you just want to have a substitute motion that says that the council approves the plan, the action statement, as amended by the committee, and then the administration has direction that, okay, council approves what we proposed as amended, and they're going to go on with the Comprehensive Plan amendments, and you're going to be engaged in budget discussions, so I think it'll all get worked out. But, I don't, I don't read this motion as saying the entire goal has been completed, just a portion of it.
Councilmember Share.
Thank you.
Another attorney's view.
I was actually going to just say what the city attorney said, because that is the way that the motion reads, that it is the Hillside Park portion of the goal. And obviously, that portion of the goal has been done with the proviso, as the committee discussed, that Parks and Rec will be submitting for funding in the CFP, park improvements. And I believe Brian also talked in committee about further community engagement that will also occur as part of that process. In other words, Parks isn't just going to go out and submit for funding. We talked about swing sets, play areas, you know, we heard a lot of comments from the community about keeping with the, as Tola said, the rustic character. And so, you know, the last thing that anybody wants to do is just put some big old play structure in there. It would not fit with the character of that park. And so, Parks assured us that there would be engagement, and then there would be requests for funding through the CFP. And so, I read that action item and the comp plan amendments as the next steps that I trust the Parks Department will be doing, even if we declared the entire goal complete. I trusted that those things will still be done as part of the administration's work plan, because that's what they've pledged to us and what was presented to the committee. So, with that level of trust in the Parks Department, that's again why I had no problem supporting this, this particular motion. I still think it's weird that it's in an agenda bill.
That was very helpful. So, with that understanding, there is a motion that has been seconded, and there's additional discussion or questions?
The maker of the motion and the person who seconded, did you pick up on the attorney's recommendation for a way forward to change the motion? Is that something that I can ask you to repeat?
I think this would be essentially the same as what this says, but, to put it in a different language, not talking about goals, just to approve the Parks, the action statement of the plan for Hillside Park as amended. Or the Hillside Park, let's see, was it entire plan for Hillside Park? I'm a little vague on that. All right. The Hillside Park.
Councilmember Marts.
So, I move to amend the bill, to amend Agenda Bill 6948 as follows. To replace the move to language as currently written, that the paragraph that begins direct administration, to close that entire paragraph and replace it with, I move to approve the action statement, the Parks and Recreation Department will submit for funding within the Capital Facilities Project, CFP, request to address park improvements, including low impact, low maintenance play elements, in keeping with the rustic nature of the park.
And I will second that motion.
Okay.
And amend them, yeah.
So, are you ready to vote on the amendment?
Question?
Yes.
So, this is, you offered that as a motion, as, did you amend your-
I intended it as a motion to amend, and to replace the language that was in the move to, the entirety of the language that's in move to, with what I just said, which was basically wrapping that, that paragraph, that indented paragraph, with move to.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, it would have been nice if- It'd be, you don't need to amend the agenda bill. You could, your motion would be just to amend your motion to be as you stated. You don't have to amend the agenda bill. You don't have to amend the agenda bill. You're, you're amending your motion to...
Yes, I see.
To, in that way. And that's all you have to do. The agenda bill is what the agenda bill is.
I see.
Councilmember Scherer?
Just a point of order, if he moves to amend his motion, then the original motion would still be on the table after the vote on the amendment. I took it as a substitute motion to replace the original motion.
You still have to have two votes, but, yeah. It, it doesn't matter.
Would you, would you prefer that I restate it?
I think it's pretty clear.
I think it's pretty clear. I think we've spent more time on this than it deserves, and it is testing our parliamentary procedure.
And understanding of...
So, additional discussion on the revised...
It's the motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Oh, yeah, the motion to amend.
All those in favor of approving the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Now, the main motion as amended.
Now, all those in favor of the main motion as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. This is, this has been a real challenge this evening. I want to thank my colleagues for their patience, and Wayne, and Josh. It, okay.
I, I'm not sure I actually voted on the main motion. I didn't get the words out of my mouth fast enough, but I, I'll concur for purposes of the record, in case anyone has a question.
Well, if you would not have voted, it would have counted as your vote anyway.
I was still processing all of that.
Okay. Okay, so, that concludes our regular business. Moving now to good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order? Paul?
Thank you. Today is the 16th of March, meaning you have how many days until your goals must be submitted?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, just a reminder. And, does anybody have any questions or for me about the process or about the, the goal submittal template? Yes?
Were we going to get a copy of the emerging issues presentation? Did I miss that? Did we get that? I think we asked for it.
It had been requested. I'll double check and see if it went out. If not, we'll get it out tomorrow.
Anything else for good of the order?
I'm done.
I have, I believe you saw a draft, a, a letter this afternoon, reference transportation funding, that is, the purpose of which is to provide an opportunity for the mayor and council president and council members to sign a letter in support of transportation I, it talks about those projects that are listed in our legislative agenda as priority packages that we would like to see included. The purpose of this would go to our senators and representatives, asking for their support. I would be interested in the council's desire to sign this individually, or to have me just sign it, to have me and the council president sign it, or all of us sign the Councilmember Scherer?
Thank you, Mayor. A few points. So, first of all, I, I think we should all sign it. This is a great, great letter. You know, these items here, these transportation items that are in a potential package, I, I would encourage the community, tell the folks in Olympia to get this job done. Get a transportation package passed. If you care about congestion relief on our roadways and our freeways, get this passed. You know, I've been talking about an overcrossing at your 12th Avenue for eight or nine years now, and, you know, we're still in the starting blocks, and this is just unbelievable. You know, the accident that occurred at the Front Street overpass this week, that just shows us the need for fixing that interchange, providing additional crossings. You know, when you close a lane there on Front Street and a lane on I-90, look what happened that night alone. So, those are really critical items. The last paragraph, I did have two points on, where it says, "On behalf of all Issaquah residents and others who utilize the I-90 corridor." You know, we talked briefly at ETP last week about the, the regional nature of transportation, because there were some comments about cities perhaps being provincial, or perhaps legislative districts being provincial, and trying to find projects that only benefit constituents within that district or that city. And it was Kathy Lambert who talked about really the regional nature of transportation problems that we face, that it's not just Issaquah, and it's not just our neighbors to the north and south and east and west, but it's really a regional problem. So, you know, when it says, "On behalf of all Issaquah residents and others," I don't represent others, we don't represent others, who use the corridor, but I'm still willing to advocate in our position on behalf of those others, because things that are done outside of our city limits benefit our constituents as well. So, if the 9018 interchange ever gets fixed and done, that's going to help Issaquah residents. If fixes are made on the HOV lanes, that's going to help Issaquah residents. So, we don't have to say, you know, just Issaquah residents, so I, I think that language is fine. The only change I would make in summary is in that very last sentence where it says, "We urge adoption of the transportation package," I would change "the" to "a," because the letter starts out saying "a transportation package." And when it says "the," I read that to mean the package that the Senate sent over to the House, which is not going to be the final package. And we heard from, from Representative Rodney that there will be certainly changes in the House. So, it doesn't have to be "the" package, but just "a" package that gets these items done, and I'd be happy to individually sign it.
Other comments? Paul?
Thank you. I have no problem with that small change that Josh just suggested. I'd also add too, and this is, I'm going to be a little bit selfish for Issaquah, because I think it's important that everybody knows this. And on Saturday, our representatives, Magan Dons and Rodney, were, had town hall meeting at, over here, next, next door to us, and I was in attendance and had opportunity to talk about transportation with them. And I reminded them there, and they did not know this, and I don't know how many of our residents know this as well, that that IJR, the interchange justification report, is not just about improving the flow on and off I-90, whether it be at one or both intersections that exist already at 15 and 17. You know, it also is step one necessary, step one for, for if they're ever going to build another overpass, which is about internal circulation within, within Issaquah, which is a linchpin project in the 16-year transportation concurrency package that we just passed. So, the funding for the IJR isn't, is, is about creating better mobility options within Issaquah and relieving congestion on those shared intersections for all regional pass-through traffic. And I think the scope of that is incredibly important. It's not, it, yes, it's an overpass, but it's a critical, it's the linchpin project in my mind, on how we are going to achieve better circulation and mobility for our residents in the long run. And so, I made that point, and I think that both of our representatives acknowledged not being aware of that, and very, being very appreciative of getting that extra information. So, I share that with all our listeners and audience members as well, that this is a very strategic project tied to the concurrency action and improved mobility options for citizens of Issaquah to circulate through town without having to mix with all of the pass-through traffic at peak PM hours. So, so, I definitely support this as well, and, and I think there was a lot of support for the, a transportation package shared with those representatives on Saturday. Very, very strong messages, and I heard very strong words as well of support of some type of, of, of package coming out of the House.
Paul?
May I ask this item that says peak hour use lanes between Issaquah and Bellevue, is that adding a lane, or is that converting the HOV lane?
No, that's use, converting the shoulder to an additional lane.
Okay. So, they would maintain the HOV lane?
And then, adding transportation, demand management, a lot of the electronics and things like that, that, and the messaging. For the IJR, I just noticed this has 2 million, and it actually should be 2.3. I will make that change. I agree, changing the V to A makes a lot of sense. And I would just like to, Paul did a great job of pointing out the importance of the interchange justification report to those that were president, were present, and to Representatives Magan Dons and Rodney also. And, and so, that, that message, I think, was received in a very positive way, and they understand the importance of it. Any other comments, Stacy?
I, I will echo the comments already made, and I strongly support it. I am happy to sign it individually as well.
Great. Okay, so, we will finalize this and get your signatures one way or another, and share this with our legislators. Anything else for good of the order?
Is, is that something we can still do this evening? Hard copy, we're all here, we're all gathered, we all have pens. So, just to put it out there, it might be the best opportunity in a timely manner. We are going to go into executive session.
Maybe?
Maybe, okay. Just a thought.
We will now move into executive session. The purpose for the executive session is to discuss current litigation for RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per N I. It's expected to take 20 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow, and we will reconvene after that. We are adjourned to executive session at 8:24.